This meeting is called, Lord. It's the low call.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Mr. James Green?
Here.
Mr. Didi Green?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mayor, I present the Ms. Prager.
Every father, we come today asking that you will help us to humble our hearts as we approach your throne, that we may follow your guidance, do your will for the good of this community. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us and ask that you will bless everyone assembled in this audience. We ask these blessings and others in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, redemptive and justicious.
Welcome to this meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman. We appreciate your attendance. It's always good to have a public interest. I'm going to also ask that we will pause for just a moment and give a moment of silence for the sister of our former chief, Eric Montgomery, foster sister. So let us give a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, we're down to item number three, uh, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Cindy Hendricks, and I'm going to give my address. It's my business, nineteen oh five, Miss Madison, because that's inside the city limits. And, um, I just kind of wanted to comment, um, really in a summary of what everything is on the agenda. Uh, I hope I do it in a very positive way. Um, there's since I've been to many of the city council meetings and sometimes we always look at this agenda as being problem solving. And I just kind of want to address the, um, the council and first of all, I want to congratulate James Green because now he'll be serving me in my district. So congratulations to you. Um, I would like for us to start looking as we, as a community, as a city council mayor, that these are always not always problems that we have to solve, but opportunities. An opportunity to make things better here in our community. Um, one of the things I know that, uh, we feel like sometimes is that we're not all on the same page. And you know, it says in scripture, you know, a house divided doesn't last very long, it falls. And I hope that in this new session, as we start again, because I know there's many things on here, that we can address that and come together on a resolution on some of these items. I would like to say thank you to the people who are going to be coming up here that are going to be addressing blight in their areas. And I want to thank Didi Green for volunteering and doing all the things that he can in his district to make things better. I would hope that each council member would start maybe looking at maybe going to their businesses and their constituents in their district, that they can start understanding the problems that we have. And by that, they all can come back together, together as a unified council and do things with a vision that we need in this community. I don't know if very many of you have actually had a vision of what you want your district to look like, how safe you want your people to feel, or any of those issues that may be happening within your district. And like I said, the only one that I do know as of right now is I know Didi has volunteered to go out and be a part of his community and also to help others. And I just think that's something that's very, very important. Now, I know many of you may get calls, but I'm sure most of those calls are those calls that are for problems. So try and look at those calls as an opportunity to do the other things for our community. One of the other things that, uh, I want to address that I think is going to be good for our community, is going to be last on the agenda, is trying to get our part back on, at Carter Park, back together. I want to commend the people that are trying to help the youth in this community because everyone needs to think about the youth is our future. And these kids need to have a safe environment to play in, and not only am I talking about safety, I'm talking about safety on the grounds. You know, and that part was something that brought a lot of, um, economic value to our community. So I'm glad that they are trying really hard to do something in that area. The, uh, only other thing that I have here is, um, like I said, I know that on the agenda you have sometimes that you have reports from different departments. I would like to sometimes have someone talk about what we are doing about blight. What are we doing about Main Street, that what kind of projects that we have going forward? You know, I think that could be a very good uplifting thing to know that y'all are working and working hard to make this better. The, the meal went down, but we shouldn't go down with it. We still have people here. We need to grow. We don't need to just keep wallowing in saying, well, we don't have the meal, we don't have the meal. We have each other. And I think that that's real important, that we start to realize of what we've got and to work toward those things. So I guess as I say, I only have one scripture here. It says, "Give and it will be given to you." Good measure pressed down, shaken together, running over, will be put into your lap. For with the measure you use, that's the talents that you have and if the election, people elected you to help us, then it will be coming back to you. Thank you.
Were there any other comments that could, uh, go with the line announcements? We want to welcome. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Kay Turbin. I live in six oh two Elmhurst Drive. And I am in favor of passing this resolution to disallow large animals in our city limits. I think we want Bastrop to be as nice a place as it could possibly be. And it's not nice if your neighbor has large animals in their yard with all the excrement creating a smelly, muddy mess. There is runoff that will go into the neighbor's yard or the ditches used by other people. Um, large animals attract insects. We don't want that. The feed you have to have farm attracts rodents. We don't want that. And there's also the safety issues for our neighborhood. These animals at some point are going to get out, and that is a danger to adults and children too. And so I would just, um, appeal to each one of you for the good of Bastrop to pass this resolution to not allow large animals in this city limits. Thank you.
Okay, I think I started with, uh, we want to welcome new council member, Mr. James Green. He's been sworn in to represent District C. We welcome you aboard, Mr. Green. And congratulations also on your behalf. Okay, uh, the next announcement that I have, update from Mid Cities Conference that was held in West Monroe. There were a number of topics that were discussed that are applicable to mid-sized cities such as ours. And one of the things that they've noticed is possibly looking at changes in the near future because so many newspapers are folding in smaller communities. And also we talked about the, the Water Act that's coming down. And that later date, we're going to have an update. I've talked with Mr. Nelson and we're going to have an update on the Clean Water Act. Mr. Nelson, are you here?
Right here.
Okay. And we will formally put that on the agenda. Okay, thank you. You'll notice in your packet, you have, um, an invitation from the Attorney General Jeff Landry's office on Good Government Program Seminar set for April nineteenth at Union Parish Police Jury Annex. And you have to RSVP on whether you plan to attend or not. We're moving forward with the marker on Dr. Mabel John. And we're moving towards accepting donations. We have had some donations from Monroe. And I want to publicly thank, um, the Water Company for making the first local donation to identify the legacy of Dr. Mabel John. She was born here and she's a legendary person. Her brother was little Willie John. So we're joining all of the music trails in North Louisiana to have this identified. I met with, um, Police Jury President, Mr. Terry Matthews. So if you care to make a donation to this cause, you're free to call two eight three 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 zero one. We are short of just a little bit of money in, in doing so. What do I say, a little bit of money, but we appreciate that generosity from the Water Company.
Mayor, how much are you short? Can you tell me?
We are short of about two thousand dollars.
I was going to say the chamber would pledge, but I don't think I've pledged that much.
Well, we, you're taking smaller donations and I'm going to personally give a personal donation.
I will, I will be calling your office and making a donation.
That's my office, number two eight three three. You know it. For the sake of somebody else who may not, two eight three 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 zero one. Thank you, Ms. Forward. And we will have an unveiling. We had to send up a deposit for them to, to, um, start making. We're taking care of that. Love the Boot Week, April seventeen through, uh, the twenty-third. Keep Morehouse beautiful event, Forest Park, on Fourth Month, twenty-third, from eight AM to ten AM. Mr. Green, you've always, um, kind of liked to take the lead with that Love the Boot. Do you, you want to add something to that?
Well, I think they're doing it over on Forest, right? Yeah, the group that I'm with, we just want to participate with them and get it done as well.
Okay.
As well as my district, Miss Angela's district as well. So I'm pretty sure they, they want to get in this work. We will be doing it.
Okay, thank you. We did submit some information as we did last year. I'm hoping we made the threshold and get some free t-shirts like we did. All right, uh, Morehouse Community Development Coast Walk Autism Saturday. That's Fourth Month, twenty-two, from ten AM to twelve PM in Forest Park. This is National Fair Housing Month Proclamation. We have a proclamation. I believe you have a copy of it in your packets and I've also posted it and it's only that we posted on the web yet. It goes back with the history of the Fair Housing Act. It goes back with, uh, Civil Rights Movement. Uh, upcoming elections for District B early voting is April fifteen through the twenty-second, and the election date is April the twenty-fifth. Is it twenty-ninth?
Yes.
What is it, what is it called?
The March.
The March. You know, I wondered about that because something else is on the ballot and it had the twenty-ninth. If you may, if you may, it's twenty. Okay, I stay incorrect there. April the twenty-ninth. Are there any other announcements?
Um, I want to give an announcement to the City of Bastrop for getting Dawson Park together for us. We had an Easter, our second annual Easter hunt this past Saturday. It was every bit of three hundred to five hundred people out there. We gave away over twenty-seven hundred in prizes. So I just wanted to thank the City of Bastrop for helping us out. But not just in us out, but getting the parks ready for us.
That's great. Also, uh, as I mentioned, blighted property, I sent representatives from Bastrop on blighted property. We know that there are ordinances that address it. We know it takes a long time. Uh, Mr. Mike Duffin. And I know sometimes the patient, the citizen, may not endure what you are enduring, but, but we do have to follow the law. You want to give an update on what we were looking at?
Well, the ordinance, uh, well, our ordinance come out. There's a grant coming out for it. But like I said, we're behind on this, this fiscal year, so maybe we can get it next year is, is to clean up more of the city than more cleaning up.
Okay, and, and there are so many strings attached in terms of property owns it. Oftentimes property that is abandoned has multiple owners that live in other states and the airship poses a problem. I remember the very first time I was in office, we had a half million dollars to clean up and nobody met the threshold. And that's unfortunate. And that's something that I have been very vocal about. If they're going to give money or award money, we need to be able to, to at least put our hands on this. Like having a car and snatching it away every time we reach for it.
But that's the biggest problem we have is like month, the phone target.
Okay, but we will continue to pursue every avenue that we have. Thank you so much. I have two certificates that I'd like to give this month. And you have probably heard me say that we can praise people to success. And I've made my, my own traditional part of it. Two, three. I have a certificate of recognition to present to Ms. Barbara Padd. This is a certificate for Ms. Barbara Padd, Communication Supervisor for exemplary experience and knowledge in communication. She has been with the Bachelor Police Department for thirty-nine years. Pause of your service. We want to say thank you and present you with this certificate of appreciation. Does she want to say something? The second certificate of recognition is presented to Jamie Wages. Mr. Wages here? Does it still work?
It still works.
Okay. Mr. Wages also received a Chamber Award, and he is receiving this certificate. He has seven years of service, and he has displayed a very proactive role as a supervisor who showed a strong and friendly, faithful presence in the community. Thank you. Item number six. Okay, item number five, thank you.
Ma'am, before we can approve those minutes, I have a question that we need to ask about those minutes.
Yes, sir.
We had a question, uh, Mr. Green asked for a Attorney General's opinion on the issue of the lawyers, and we haven't gotten any notification. I cannot say that, but we haven't gotten any notification on those minutes, on that appointment, our lawyers.
Yes, sir. You said Mr. Green had a question?
No, I said Mr. Green made the motion on last meeting.
Yes, sir.
About an opinion from the Attorney General about our lawyer situation.
Yes, sir.
And we haven't heard anything else from, from that opinion.
No, sir. In fact, uh, my secretary, when she was scheduling my RSVP, they did indicate that they are going to be getting that opinion to us shortly, but I do not have anything in hand to present to you.
And Mr. Pierre, you sent a separate one, right?
The council did ask me to send AG opinion request. I did send AG opinion request. I have received a correspondence from Attorney Jones office indicating they have assigned it to an attorney. I said that at the last meeting, but I have not gotten an opinion from the, uh, general yet.
So we still a status quo?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have not. As soon as I receive that communication, I will be more than happy to share it with all of the council members. But as I said, they did acknowledge that they are working on it. And I did receive confirmation that they have made the assignment on the request that I sent.
What you sent is different than what we got, right, in your seat?
What I sent was what happened occurred, that it is being verbatim.
So we got two opinions, two Attorney General opinions?
We haven't gotten any.
Well, we requested two of City Attorney, the mayor.
Uh, I sent one as the mayor would use, uh, within purview of the mayor's authority to do so.
So your, your, the opinion that you requested, is it the same as the one that he requested? Or which one is one of what we requested in the meeting?
I'm sure when they, when they put it all together, they will, they will make that decision.
Can we look at both of them?
Can you look at both of what?
Both of the opinions that were sent in, since it was two separate opinions.
I, I, okay, you asked Mr. Pierre.
Yes.
To send a request.
Back in February, was it February? February, yeah, February.
So, so Mayor, your opinion was your own personal opinion? What you wanted to give for yourself?
My opinion was parallel to what appeared to be, uh, clearing up the confusion that was presented.
I get it. So per procedure, do you have to get a resolution to send your opinion?
No, I do not. And I, I'm going to add, Mr. Pierre sent that opinion in as the prosecutor because his duties have been assigned, and he has stated that publicly. Okay, are we ready? Item number five, approved minutes, regular meeting, agenda number nine. I mean, agenda, uh, approved agenda meeting, March nine, twenty twenty-three.
Ma'am, I'm going to make that motion, but I'm making it with exceptions. And that was on the opinion. I'm making a motion to approve the minute with exceptions.
What is, what is your exception?
The opinion that we haven't gotten back. Because it's, it's going to come up again in, in the meeting tonight.
So, Mr. Wild, what, the wording of the minutes, what he wants to take out of the minutes?
That we still, that motion is tabled and we haven't gotten any action yet.
Okay, in making the motion to table it and honoring your request, I did not put it on the agenda. So you're wanting to, let me make sure that, that the staff is clear on what you are requesting. You wanted to table the minutes. Now, we have no control over when the Attorney General's opinion is going to come in. If I do recall correctly, on another Attorney General's opinion that was dug by Mr. Pierre, no one ever saw the, the request, no one ever saw the response. So.
Which Attorney opinion was that?
That was on, uh, the appointment of Mr. Givens.
You're talking about?
Appointment, uh, on, on Mr. Givens as police chief.
So, uh, for, for understanding purposes, what was the purpose of you sending that?
What was the purpose of my sending what?
What, you just made the statement about the Attorney General opinion that he requested way back two years ago? Because we're talking about the lawyer situation.
That's true. You exactly right. But what I'm saying is we have no control over when the Attorney General is going to send that response. So if you want to wait indefinitely, this, if that's the prerogative of this board, that you want to approve the minutes with an exception, we just need clarity on that. I cited that as an example.
Oh, no.
So, so the Attorney General opinion comes back, you still going to have a problem because you got two. You got the, the City Attorney saying one thing and you got the mayor saying another thing. We need to get some clarity. Which one, uh, which one is official? Which one should the council?
The council requested Mr. Pierre to send in Attorney General opinion.
You're going to have a problem.
Okay. Let me offer some clarity in terms of that. The mayor is responsible for day-to-day operation. The mayor makes the assignment of attorney. Mr. Pierre has been, and he has stated that he, the mayor makes that appointment. I mean, that, I'm sorry, the, uh, the mayor does make the appointment. Mayor's the only one that can make the appointment. But the mayor makes the assignment, and he was assigned back to City Prosecutor.
So you seen that City Prosecutor, he can't, he can't request Attorney General opinion?
You asked him to do it, and we didn't. I didn't, I didn't.
So we all have a City Attorney?
So back when you brought up, you brought up the situation of our car Givens, what was his role then?
He was, he was on, uh, the appointment that I had assigned him at that time.
Right, that was prosecutors because we had, at the time, we had Ricky Smith as well. We had Ricky and we had Rodney as well. So he, if you saying that appointment, I mean, that Attorney General opinion that you stated that he did back on Mr. Givens was valid, how did it not?
I, I never said it was invalid. I said he sent it in as prosecutor.
So it's okay for us to use the opinion that he sent in on behalf of the council?
I, I've made it very clear over and over again, Mr. Pierre's assignment is City Prosecutor.
Yes, sir. So we're without a City Attorney?
We have an emerald.
We did, we did not vote on it.
You don't, you don't vote on an emerald?
We, we have to approve a City Attorney maximum.
But you can't leave the city uncovered.
The city is covered.
It is, it is because by virtue of his office, I have an emerald.
I, I think that was the point up there, the Attorney General opinion, just seeing that if that, in fact, you can place an interim attorney because neither one of us have read it. So I, for clarity, that was our purpose of having Mr. Rodney to send in a, for Attorney General opinion.
And, 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 and you got your wish. And I send in one as mayor. But in the meantime, I have an advisory to advise the city legally. I will not leave the city unprotected, and if you're looking for verbatim information in, in the charter, in the Larson Act, or, or anywhere, but you will find consistently that the mayor is the appointing person responsible for day-to-day operation. You, you may not see in there that the bathroom has to be cleaned every day, but we know that that has to happen.
So has contract been initiated with Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones is serving as an interim, interim advisor.
I'm, I'm just asking how, how do we come up with a fee to pay him if we're paying him?
We have not paid him, he has not invoiced us yet.
So interim, he gonna do it for free?
I didn't say that. He is serving as an advisor in that capacity, there's money allocated in the budget, but he has not invoiced us.
So we have money allocated in budget for an interim attorney?
We have money allocated for legal fees.
So he's working for free under no contract?
He is working under my direction.
For free, no contract?
I didn't say free. Actually said that, read the language, she just said that he haven't sent an invoice, like, uh, invoice is coming.
It is.
So he's not working for free, he's gonna be paid sooner or later.
Well, I just like to negotiate with him. What's the negotiation rate?
I think when there is some clarity provided on the role of the mayor and what differentiates the mayor from the board of all the persons, that the mayor is the.
But we have to approve the bills and claims.
And you get that every month, every month, you get bills and claims, it's in your pocket. There is nothing that's trying to be hidden, there is no hidden agenda. My sole purpose and interest is to protect this city, provide legal guidance, so that we all will be legally safe and on solid footing. Are you ready to, um, undertake a motion?
So no man with no exceptions.
Properly moved, that was a lot, and second by Mr. Green. Any questions? I think we're gonna add on a question, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of an action on reports of committees appointed of the governing body. Okay. Chief Williams? Chief Reed? Okay, anybody on the council? You have any, we, we organized committees very early on on crime and, and each of you serve in it. Reports, if you'd like to bring to the forefront?
We have some going for the litter, but I propose staying, we wanna make sure we're ironing everything out. And we're just gonna need your help, these big as well, I'll be interested, I think you'll like the ideas, boys.
Okay, you ready? Item number seven, reports of city officials or employees by law or by action of the governing body. Anyone with any reports on that? Hey, Finance Committee Report Resolution Twenty-three dash twenty, thirty-four bills and claims for the month of March, twenty twenty-three.
May I make a motion that we approve, uh, Resolution Twenty-three, Twenty-three-four bills and claims for the month of March, two thousand twenty-three?
Yes, sir, we have a motion.
I would like to offer, what's, what's the procedure for offering another motion at this time? I wanna pay all the bills and claims except for line items one twelve and one twenty-seven, which has to do with lawyer fees that we already limbo about. So I don't believe we should just pay lawyer fees if we don't even know what's going on?
Okay. What lawyer fees?
It's on the, it's on the one twelve and one twenty-seven.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-three, twenty dash thirty-four bills and claims for the month of March. Mr. Locke, you put a motion on the floor, are you withdrawing your motion, Mr. Locke?
I'm just hearing what the, uh, comments right now.
Yeah, we have two items on the, um, on bills or resolutions there. Again, come back to what we've been fussing about, well, not fussing, disagreeing about. I get it, got to do what I, um, so that's what we here with, it's back on, it's back on the agenda, I think, um, uh, like, we have.
If I may advise you on formulary procedures, that was on.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Pierre, you are, Mr. Pierre, order?
Mayor, you can't, I, I don't know how you try to spin this, I am the City Attorney.
Mr. Pierre, no, he is not.
Because we rescinded the temporary.
Order? Mr. Pierre, Mr. Pierre.
Yes, yes, we will.
Mr. Pierre, you would not do this in Monroe with the mayor. You are out of order, you are the city prosecutor, sitting in the city attorney's seat.
Mayor, if you want me to advise you on what the law is, I'll do it. The council wants me to advise them on what the formulary procedures are, I am.
I have an advisory.
We rescinded that much.
You can, you cannot rescind an interim.
We rescinded that one.
You, you cannot rescind.
Well, we would like Mr. Pierre to advise us.
Okay, well, he can advise you on your own time.
No, ma'am, it doesn't work like that.
Mr., uh.
We're not listening to Mr. Jones, he's not our attorney.
Well, Mr. Pierre is not the city attorney either?
If I may, may I be heard, Mayor?
No, sir, no, sir, because you have disrespected, you have said from your seat over and over again, the mayor makes the assignment. You have not only disrespected the mayor's office, as far as I'm concerned, you are disrespecting this council.
And you're disrespecting us, ma'am, but I.
I'm not disrespecting you, I'm caring on the city's business.
Uh, with all due respect, this, this is, so we gotta come to a resolution, I think, or something. Because the council needs counseling and somebody's gotta advise the council as to which way to go, what to do, so we need to come, somebody would need to come to, we need to come to some kind of agreement or something, because this is, this is unacceptable. I mean, this, we, we, we're here to represent the people. And what we doing now is, is totally out of order and unacceptable. Somebody got to advise somebody because we can't go in the blind. We representing the people and we need legal, we need legal counseling to avoid the pitfalls of where we going right now, so I don't know who the council are, who, who the councilman is, or who our advisor is gonna be, but something need to be worked out, I, I don't, I don't know what the problem is here, but it, this is totally unacceptable.
Okay.
This council's already approved me considering your name, so we have to send this attorney. I mean, I don't know if y'all, y'all can tell if I want to have to do that, that's up to y'all.
We have, we asked Mr. Pierre to advise us.
I don't know what that means. Mr. Pierre?
I'm trying to advise you on formulary procedures and.
I have an advisor, you are.
You have to advise him, I would advise him to Mr. Pierre.
Order? Order, this is, this is a legal proceeding, this is a meeting.
But you telling us, Mr. Jones, does not have a contract, he's passing bill to invoice. Who does he work for? He doesn't work for the city, no contract.
And, and Mr. Pierre is assigned to the courtroom as prosecutor.
He's a city lawyer.
Mr. Miss, I'm not gonna debate you, Miss Taff.
And I'm not either, I just asked Mr. Pierre to give us some guidance.
Mr. Pierre is not going to speak in this meeting from the capacity as the city attorney.
Mayor, you cannot stop him from speaking.
No, it's a public meeting.
You cannot, Mayor.
You are not on the agenda.
Do y'all, y'all have a question for me?
Yes.
Are you going to disregard order?
No, I mean.
I see, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna have to have some order here. The mayor presides over the meeting.
Right.
Now, if she's, if she advises someone they're out of order and they continue to be out of order, we're gonna remove them. It's just that simple.
Not this one, not this one.
I get my lawyer on speed dial.
So ultimately, y'all. Uh, victim, order?
Well, I got one question. Well, who's supposed to advise the council if he's not going by, he's not going by?
He doesn't have a contract.
Right, my point, somebody's gotta, we need somebody.
The mayor, the mayor made an interim appointment as an advisor, and if you choose not to listen to him and you want, but that's who I have been listening to.
You saying I have.
That's who, well, then, I brought the, I brought the appointment beginning in November. The, the council cannot create a gridlock to tie the hands of the city.
Also, too, the, the council that you, that you appointed represent, you represent the town's city ambassador. So we have, we have someone that are in place that can legally represent us right now to keep us from being leaked, uh.
Okay, and he is the city prosecutor.
I can clear it all up if y'all have anything to.
Well, we asked you to, she didn't have this.
I make a, I make a motion to render my time, let Pierre speak.
I didn't ask for a motion.
I, I can make my own motion, Mayor, you can't stop that, I'm the council. I make a motion to make.
Mr. Pierre?
We need to do it.
All right. You are sitting and you are, you are being insubordinate. And, and one, one more, one more order, Mr. Pierre. I have tolerated this from November until now, you have disregarded, you have disregarded your assignment, and if this is some type of way to usurp the authority of the mayor and disrespect this office, that to me is unacceptable. And a disrespect to everybody sitting in this assembly.
I mean.
Maybe not, just, just free, free America. If you don't want to approve the minutes.
If I may, I'll say something, please.
The bills and the claims is what we want.
Yes, and we, you have a motion, so maybe you need to ask for a second with Phil because we didn't have a second.
Okay.
So if there's no second, then ask for the, then you go to Phil to another one, whatever.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve all bills and claims except for line item one twelve and one twenty-seven.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to, uh, approve bills and claim, that exception and without any open disclosure of what those bills were. You're asking the city to, uh, go in arrears? Is that what you're asking, because the bills have to be paid?
When, we don't wanna pay any lawyer fees, this is all in limbo. One twelve, one twenty-seven. We just need a vote now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Roll call?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Green, so James Green? Mr. David Green? Which one?
Okay, that's the council code.
We're gonna be at number eight.
Okay, action on ordinance and resolution introduced in previous meetings. That's, Ms. Goldman. Why action on ordinance and resolution is introduced at previous meetings?
Yes, ma'am, that's the ordinance of the horse, and I want it to be introduced, we have the public here just before this meeting. So it's, it's ready for the consideration of action.
Okay, that's ordinance Twenty-three dash forty-two sixty-nine and ordinance to amend section fifteen dash twelve of the Code of Ordinance to prohibit the keeping of horses, mules, swine, cows, goats, and light animals within the limits of the city. At this time, I'll undertake a motion.
I make that motion to approve ordinance Twenty-three dash four-two-sixty-nine.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Motion and second, any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, other unfinished business. Do you have, well, any other unfinished business, Ms. Goldman?
I mean.
Item number ten, introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinance and resolution. Okay, Ms. Goldman, is there any? Introduction of and permitted act on proposed ordinance and resolution, is there any, Mayor?
Mayor, we did really have one objection to that introduction, we can do that later on.
Okay. Item number eleven, other business, executive session, which is not necessary. Item B. Only thing I need on B, discussion action Ronald Willhite employment issue, is a motion to confirm the resignation of Ronald Willhite as Police Works Director.
Do you have a copy of the letter?
That copy is in his file, it is a personnel file. I will undertake a motion on confirming the resignation of Mr. Ronald Willhite.
I make the motion.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, April Hill, M.L. Case South, and Carl Blackroad, this, this.
She reached out to me, uh, roughly two days ago. She stated that she talked to the police jury president, which is Mr. Terry. Terry stated that him and the city ambassador get together with her and talk about the issue. So she wanted to thank you for putting on the agenda.
We are waiting for, um, survey. And that has not been done yet, we have not received an invoice on that, I have not received any communication on that, and I have spoken with police jury president. Item D, Rose Marie Baker continuing code violation. Is this address, Ms. Gold, is this the address, is this the address of the code?
That's the address of the complaint.
The complaint. If you come to the microphone, state your name, your address.
My name is Rose Marie Baker, I live in eleven oh one Apollo Drive in Bastrop. But I'm here, um, about the concerns at fourteen oh three Country Club Road in Bastrop. I'm a property owner with my siblings at fifteen oh seven Country Club Road in Bastrop, which is three houses down from this problem, property. The property has been addressed in the past, but the problems continue with the owner or the renter, whoever's in there, despite having been to court. On twelve twelve twenty-two, I met with Chastity Kennedy in Code Enforcement Office to report the deplorable condition of a yard residence at the subject address. Chastity informed Mr. McDuffie by the phone that I wanted to be in the court hearing for this matter, and I was present in her office when she made that call. Very next day, Chastity called me back to report the case was on the court docket for one twenty-six twenty-three at nine AM. She also stated she would send the property owner another letter because the case had been idle since the last letter was sent to him six twenty-seven twenty-two. That same day, twelve thirteen, I sent an email confirming all this above matter to Mr. McDuffie, the copies to Chastity Kennedy, Angela Moore, and I tried to send one to Mayor Olive, but it didn't go through. On one twenty-three twenty-three, I called the city court to verify the court date, and I was informed by Tina Wallace that this address and problem was never on the court docket. So why was I told it was? There's some kind of disconnect there, I was told it was on the court docket and now it's not. The property owners, renters, get their hands slapped. They shove all that junk. The property owners, renters get their hands slapped. They shove all that junk, every scrap of wood and junk under the carport, and it's filled to overflowing. Literally overflowing. Then they slowly pull out all the trash in the yard again. This is done repeatedly. They do not get the message that this is a residential subdivision within the city limits and neighbors are simply seeing the mess. The front yard is littered with junk, woodworking stuff, yard sale items, cars, metal items, and dogs running loose. It's an environmental hazard, it's unsanitary, probably rodent infested, and totally unacceptable. I've even seen the junk out, uh, approaching the street. It's not that far out on the road. On three twenty-two twenty-three, it was noted that there's a huge hole dug in the front yard. It was there today I went by. It's about three by three and about three to four feet deep. And I saw kids and dogs climbing and jumping out. I don't know what they're doing with that hole. Maybe making a swimming pool.
That hole is on city property?
It's right in front of their, in their front yard.
Okay.
It's dangerous.
It's in the yard.
It's, it's still there today. I looked. The backyard is cluttered with junk and garbage. All this is visible to the neighbors and the property is adjacent to Bastrop Pine Parking Lot. You can throw a rock and hit the Bastrop Pine Parking Lot. This should not be allowed in the city of Bastrop. Our property values are adversely affected by this horrific mess, which is allowed to continue. Serious consequences should be given to this owner and or the renter. And follow through should be done in a timely manner to prevent this from recurring in the future. And it will. They shove the stuff back in there, they wait till some of this dies down, and they pull all that junk back out. This is just repetitive. So I'm asking for assistance for this matter to be addressed and finalized. Now, the owner of the property, I was told, is Gilmer Hingle.
Well, I, let's, let's refrain from calling names.
Okay.
And addresses and it really not throwing it.
So that's all I have. That's all I have, and I just, I, I, it, it needs to be resolved.
Yes, ma'am. And we feel your pain, uh, Ms. Baker. I believe we have your address, Ms. Goldman, phone number.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I will have someone to call you, uh, and discuss this with you, the proper course of action we need to take.
And I will be monitoring it. I go by frequently and I will.
It's my district and she is correct in everything she's saying. But I know the process has been started, so I don't know what happened. I know Mister McDuffie went out, so I don't know if citations were issued. But my thing, I'm, my question is why is, aren't things going to environmental court?
Um, Ms. Rowland, we, we don't have someone to call you. That's a day to day operation. We have, we have, uh, laws that we have to follow and, and give away on somebody else's property is a situation. And we do feel your pain, Ms. Goldman. Make note of all that information, and I will have someone assigned specifically to address.
So, ma'am, what's, what be the process of your, like, um, she complaining?
That's what I just asked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just asked that.
What you asking, Angie?
I just know the process, what happens, because she's complained many times before. So I don't know why it haven't gone to environmental court. I, I just asked that question.
Well, I was told it was on the court docket, then all of a sudden it was wrong.
And let us, let us check on, on the status of that.
Said it was on the court docket.
What?
Yeah, I was told Chastity called me and told me it was on the court docket for one twenty-six twenty-three.
Well, I can't, I'm unable to verify that because I don't have that information. And some, some, some information has been lost to, but you have made a formal request before this body, and I'm going to assign somebody to that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll be watching.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do we have environmental court? Do that's a matter?
We move that in somebody, you should.
Whenever it's wrong, whatever. And there are regulations, there are steps that to bring someone to, uh, to environmental court.
But do we have environmental court? Can we, can we talk about this now?
Yes. We put, when was the, the most recent one? It was one this, was it in March or was it this month? Okay, so, so when they are properly brought and that checklist, then it, it comes to environmental court. Here's the situation, and I can appreciate your concern because I share that. I want this city to look well, too. But when we start going on city property doing things, then that creates another situation in terms of malfeasance, then trying to find them. Then with code enforcement sends out a letter, but people do not want to be found. So you gotta, you gotta have a body to bring them into court.
Cause the reason I was asking for, like, the process was because I get asked often, like, oh, when they, when they complain one time about the same thing over and over, over again, they ask, they always ask, why are we not doing anything? And so for clarity and for me to inform my position going forward, the process, because it's good for the maneuver.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's a process. My question is, they had environmental court last month. How many cases do we have?
One.
One?
One.
One, we were there.
So we not writing tickets?
That's how they do that, one for that.
So we doing citation for?
Is that the normal process, like?
Well, when you get to you, on dealing with private property, I mean, unfortunately, something being eyesore to you, to me, but regulating from the government's standpoint is not an eyesore to that person. But I hear your concern. We will get that information to you, the process that it takes, that it takes to get someone into environmental court.
I hear the process period, if we can get between the eyesore.
Okay.
Have you looked at that?
No.
Okay.
Because I think we have those types of situations, each one of our different, and we don't have an answer, uh, to tell our people what's being done.
And we don't wanna.
Well, we wouldn't say nothing is being done. We, the, the evidence and situations, when we think about how many employees we have, and we think about the restrictions, uh, that, that the city is faced with, and if you set foot on somebody's property and you face possible malfeasance, misuse of government funds. If we've put money, the taxpayers' money into that property, sometimes that property is not worth what we spend, and we have created a liability for the city. But that's something we can work on. That's a situation we're working progress.
Yeah, we don't want, when it come back to us, we don't wanna be the one, like, see you're not doing anything. We represent the city. So we just wanna inform them, the process, do the other things of everybody, and so everybody can be on the same page.
And like I said, it is a process, because this bubble's up there. It got two or three different steps, but, you know, I think you gotta be persistent in that second step. You know, when you send it over there, I think, just wanna a little bit, go along further in the process, do a little bit, do a little bit more digging and researching to see, can we come to a resolution?
Could it be possible for me to step up?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Go down, please, speak.
Uh, don't. Let's, let us take care of this from, from here. Speaking from the audience is, is really out of protocol. Thank you for the interest. But we will get those steps, that ordinance, to you, the steps that have to be followed.
Mayor, I, 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 I think we might be missing something. I don't think we're looking at the city to clean it up. We're looking at that sum to be given to that person to be brought to, right in environmental court. Not the city going to clean it up.
Okay.
But the process of getting that person in court.
Yeah, like, yeah, that's what I was asking, like, so how many times they notify the person before either, Mr. Bubba? You can go to the, you can go to the court's office.
Can Mr. Bubba, can Mr. Bubba?
Uh, let's do this. It really is unfair to throw employees off of the bus.
No, that we asked a question.
We will get it to you, that process of what has to take place. Then you will have, all have, then, then to put him on the spot like that. I have to protect the employees. We will get that process to you, and as I said, I feel your pain as well. I have, I have several eyesores that I rode around and I looked at, and this is an age-old problem. We'll get that, that information to you.
We wasn't, actually, everybody wasn't going on the bus. We just wanna ask a question. Just, that's it. We just wanna ask some question. This is job. So the question that we have is for him to answer.
Their job.
So it, it wasn't throwing him on the bus. And, uh, okay, Mr. Bubba, hope you don't take it.
And I spoke, Mr. Bubba, a lot of the problem is, and you just, man, he and I talked about this. It's a city problem, but it's a parish problem. A lot of this property you see around here, about sixty-five percent of, sixty percent of it is inside the city limits, but it belongs to parish. So therefore, our people can't really do nothing with it. So it falls back, it make us look bad inside the city limits because it's, when a person sees something inside the city limits, they just gonna assume that it belongs to the city, but that's not so. When you go back and research it, it's gonna be a lot of problems. It's not on us. I'm not trying to, I'm just being brutally honest. It belongs to another entity, not us. So, Mr. Bubba, he does the best he, he can, but it's a process. Like he says, a process. You gotta do two or three different steps. But I think we gotta be vigorous in pursuing the person that's in violation.
Okay, so here's where we are. We're gonna get that information that you requested, the steps that it takes to, uh, to get someone into environmental court. That's the information that you want.
Right, okay. Second. Right, and then we'll have to, next month.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item number, thank you, Ms. Baker.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Baker.
E. E.
Okay, item E, discussion, permission to advertise for bids for surveillance cameras for Ashville Police Department Chief Reed.
Good evening. Um, you all know, for like, the past year, I've been working with different companies and, uh, getting proposals on, getting citywide security, uh, for the city of Ashville. Uh, I've looked over about four or five different companies, got different proposals run. And so, um, now I'm asking that the council, uh, allow us to advertise bids for these, for su- uh, security surveillance cameras for the city. We have about five or six different companies I know that's already interested, so.
Were those just examples?
Um, yeah.
The photographs that you see, like the location?
Yes, that was one of the only companies that came down and actually went from location to location with me and showed me what they can do.
How many cameras are you, you just talking about and what location?
Okay, the, uh, there's two proposals on there from this particular company. The first, uh, proposal is for the square area, which will have four LPRs, north, east, south, and west, uh, license plate reading cameras. Not for traffic enforcement, but for security purposes. Then it'll have security monitoring, uh, cameras, or three security monitoring cameras in the square. Uh, that'll basically have coverage of all the businesses in the square. On this part two of it, uh, the, uh, second proposal was for the rest of the city. Have, uh, LPR on the north, east, south, and west side of town, Maruage Road, West Madison, South Washington, North Washington. The rest of the cameras will be city surveillance cameras that I went to each district and picked out approximately three to four areas where we've been having some crime in, and that's where we have those, uh, that's where we wanna put those at. So. And those were just examples that you all have in your packet from that company. That's one of the only companies. Like I said, they actually sent someone here, and we went from station to station, location to location, and showed them what it could do.
So what is your bottom line? How much, how much are you asking for? And how many cameras for that price?
Well, so far, the one I gave you has the cheapest bid, has the cheapest proposal, should I say. Um, the bottom line is it's gonna cost at least a hundred thousand dollars for sure. For citywide surveillance. Uh, four in the square, seven, eight. We're talking about twenty-five cameras. Twenty-five cameras. After, with this particular company, after two years, you own the, uh, LPR cameras, the license plate readers, you own those. After five years, you own the security cameras. Um, and you have a ten-year, they replace all the parts for ten years as long as you pay the, uh, I guess you call it, the license fee, which is two hundred and seven dollars a year. So. Compared to all the other companies, the proposals that all the other companies were giving me, they seem to be the most reasonable one that would, uh, save the most money.
Okay. Chief Reed, if you will, do a, a quick summary of the benefits. And how, uh, and you and I have talked about this, um, for some time now, would give a quick summary of the benefits to the neighborhoods? How it would be supportive of, uh, the police department? Uh, how do you, um, see serving as a reduction in, in crime?
Well, for sure, it would help us. The way these cameras are set up, the, the Ava cameras, which I gave you all, uh, they print out a few months ago at one of the meetings about the Ava cameras. These cameras are smart cameras. They, uh, integrated into a, uh, a, a system, cloud-based system, where they learn the environment. Where they learn the environment, they also learn the time periods of traffic. And, um, when something's out of the usual, they send us an alert, an alert through an app on our phone and our computers. Um, also, they detect gunfire, and they can give you, they can pinpoint the location of gunfire. Now, all these different things are gonna give us faster response times. They're also gonna give us video and pictures we can use in court when we get ready to prosecute, make arrests and prosecute. Um, with the Ava system, a lots of times, we'll get the alerts on our phones. Those of us who have access to the Ava will get the alerts before the dispatch even get it, when it comes to gunshots and things of that nature. So it's a win-win situation. The license plate readers, every vehicle that comes into town, it's gonna read those license plates. And it's gonna go back into the, the national data center. And even if we're not looking for a particular person, it's gonna alert us that this car, you know, that, that, that this, this person has a warrant out of such and such. They, they're in the national center, they're wanted for such and such. So those are some of the benefits.
So, Chief, Chief Reed, um, what time do the city of Ashville stop operating?
What time do we, as in the police department?
Listen.
Um, right now, we still from six AM to six PM. Six PM, the sheriff department takes over at night, just.
So how do they work? We want to purchase the cameras, and it's, something happened at six PM. So the sheriff department be able to access these cameras?
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a fix where, uh, the sheriff will pick out some of the people that he wants to, uh, have access to the app. It's a cloud-based app, so whoever I approve to have access to will be approved.
So how much, how much you ask for?
It's gonna be, it's on the, uh, proposal. I don't have a proposal, well, I have a proposal, but I don't think it's in order. The first one was twenty.
Put that in the pack.
Twenty-nine. We got two proposals in there. One is for twenty-nine thousand. That's for the, uh, one stuck around the square. And the other is eighty-nine, I believe, for citywide.
Because I guess the reason I was asking, because I'm gonna pay a hundred thousand dollars for some cameras, but we still, our department's still not operating the ci- the city full-time.
Which is still, is still gonna benefit because we're gonna be able, even if we don't have enough officers, like we've, even with the situation we are now in now, those cameras are gonna capture things. They're gonna capture
Oh.
vehicles, they're gonna capture people when they're in places, uh, you know, that they're not supposed to be in. It's still to help us out. We can go back, if we, if we, uh, investigate something that happened two weeks ago, and it's in the, uh, sight of one of those cameras, we can go back and play every second of it.
Uh, let's, let's go, what, what is it, Mr. Green? Okay, uh, as you know, it takes time. Okay, uh, as you know, it takes time to, to get the department back up. Recruiting, we've talked about that, getting them ready to go. So, in the meantime, I believe Chief, what you're doing is positioning yourself to have an extra set of.
Extra set eyes?
Technology eyes.
I, I mean, I, I, I love the idea, but I, it's just always, we faced with our police department. We faced with, we faced with the money that we spending to sheriff department that we could have, we could have probably got these roughly three or four police officers.
I believe this, uh, money, I don't believe it comes out of, but I believe that's coming from the rest line.
How much?
That's coming from the rest.
It was over a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's how much we didn't pay the sheriff?
If they get the bid, it's what the quotes are.
Oh, I was talking about how much we didn't pay the sheriff.
Oh, I did look that up. It's over two hundred.
So, so how much do a police officer make annually? Oh, no, you have to say that. But, so you telling me, so you telling me we can get four, four police officers? And we can pay so far, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Well, that, that amount, that amount there is what we pay out of the last year's budget, which we started in April through, uh, an invoice that we did on the thirty-first.
I get it, but that was two hundred and five.
I just want to be clear, that wasn't a year, or this year, it was.
If we had people banging at the door to, to apply for the job, we would gladly fill those spots, correct?
So, yeah, so that's, that's true. That's true. It's, it's tough at all, a lo- a lots of departments. I just got back a couple of weeks ago from, uh, chief's convention down in Lake Charles. And we facing the same thing that a lot of other departments are facing. It's shorthanded. We have, uh, I talked to a couple of chiefs who have nothing but part-time officers working for them. They have deputies that work their days off, working part-time for their department.
And this is just for bids, so.
Yes.
I make a motion that we advertise for bids.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to advertise for bids. Questions? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that takes us to item M, right, let's go.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion, action, permission to advertise the bids for hay cutting at the industrial park. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am, we have a gentleman that's cut the hay every, about three years now. He wrote us a letter, he wanted to, uh, get out of the contract, which that is, uh, one of the stipulations. So, but I did have somebody else that wanted to bid on it, so, um, if y'all want to do that. They'll be mowing all the grass on the industrial park, that's on the vacant lots, and some of the airport.
Just to say, that would've been you.
It will, it'll be a different guy, like Mr. Broadway, uh, didn't have time to do it anymore. So, he, he ended up, another guy that wants to bid on it, that used to, um, when Mr. Broadway couldn't get it, he would let that man get the hay. He just wanted to get out of it. He don't like having insurance. Now, but this gentleman here, he knows he's gotta have insurance. Yes, he does have that probability insurance.
Um. We ready to, um, undertake a motion to advertise for bids for hay cutting at the industrial park?
I'll make the motion.
Sir.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three-five, a resolution authorized the city of Bastrop, Louisiana to adopt the Adlora Millage rate for tax year twenty-twenty-three. Ms. Coleman?
Mayor, this is an annual thing that we have to do, and it's the time of the year. The millage that we're planning to do is, is the millage of what we do in current, right now, collecting. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Sheila Walker, and that's her suggestion. We just keep it there, we'll, so that way we can collect the same money. And, um, we're asking y'all to, to adopt this.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion on my G, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three-five. Still move. Off the move?
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. H, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three-six, a resolution designating April ten through April fourteen as national community development. A strong relationship between the city of Bastrop and its residents. National development or relationship. That is in their package, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am, the resolution. You did a proclamation, but they answered our resolution, maybe somewhere.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I will get an issue.
Properly moved?
All right, I think.
And second. Any questions? Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three seven, a resolution consent to the transfer of telecommunication with Unity, uh, National LLC. Ms. Coleman?
Mayor, this is a great, um, kind of a organic franchise fee. It's been in place many, many years. It serves, one of the things is right here by City Hall. But we've had several companies over the year, and they went back, rubbed in another bottom out. Well, they went through court, and the court, uh, gave tho- those assets and infrastructure to, uh, Unity National LLC. So, they're asking us to, to, uh, send them this resolution, and then we, in turn, they, they give us like eighteen thousand a year for the franchise fee. And so, that's money that we budget for every year.
Okay. Uh, I would encourage adopting this resolution, 'cause it's been outstanding for quite some time. We started receiving, or some information was going to, uh, legal division back in twenty, was it twenty-one, early part of twenty-twenty-one? I was prior to my assuming office, and this has been outstanding for quite some time now. I'll entertain a motion. This is money that I think the city could use. Some more. Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. J, ordinance twenty-three dash forty-two seventy, and ordinance to authorize the act of sale by the city of Bastrop to sell adjudicated property described as parcel zero-zero-nine-one-two-zero-zero zero-zero-zero-zero-one-two lot twelve of resurvey, uh, what is that? Almond High Track. At lot three of Almond High subdivision, as reported in plot book one in accordance with, um, LA Rev. Statute forty-seven twenty-two zero-two. And to authorize the mayor of Bastrop to sign all necessary documents and to address other matters related there to introduction. Uh, Ms. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am, this is only introduction. We had somebody, it's adjudicated to the city of Bastrop. It's went through the years. Nobody's come back and relented. Uh, somebody contacted us. We give the, to the attorney that handles this for us. They researched it. It's ready to sell. So, next month, we'll have y'all the bidder, the sexual bidder, and how much it is, and then y'all will vote on it next month.
So, the address is on Shore Island?
It is at Badris. She's got on there was six twenty-two Shore Island.
Okay, I will entertain a motion among this.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
We, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on this.
It's introduction, that's right. Thank you. All right, uh, that brings us down to K, Randy Carpenter Parks and Recreation. Can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Randy Carpenter, uh, my address is six-two-eight, six-two-eight six Forest Green Drive. All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
I do wanna thank, before we start, I wanna thank the city council members for the help they have helped me in. And, um, as we're working really hard to revive the city's, uh, baseball and softball programs. I've had a few of them that have really been hand-in-hand with me. And they've worked really hard. But as I've been in this position for a few months now, I've gathered a lot more information that I believe needs to be brought out so we can get this program back to where it used to be. And get kids more and more and more involved. Uh, we worked really hard this year to get three and four-year-olds involved in the sports, which is a great thing for the city. I think we've had, um, I think we had close to fifty-three and four-year-olds signed up in the male side along about twenty-twenty-five on the female side. That's seventy to eighty kids involved in sports. And if you know anything about sports and music, um, the facts show that, and studies show, that kids involved in sports and music are less likely to commit crime in their future. They're, you know, more likely to be, uh, productive citizens as they get older, and it's just facts. I mean, these are studies that have been shown hand down, so. But some things I wanna bring to the attention of is, uh, and I might have to go off last year's numbers, 'cause we haven't got this year's numbers quite in there. Uh, last year, we took in almost fourteen thousand dollars in total sign-up money. Um, and out of that total sign-up money, um, there was eleven, uh, about eleven thousand dollars the city kept for city fees. Um, and out of that eleven thousand dollars, three thousand dollars was paid for insurance, which left about eight thousand dollars for the city. Um, and they, they absorbed that into their parks and recreations. Um, and the unfortunate thing about absorbing it into your parks and recreations, that this comes straight from the, uh, you know, we checked this out, we found, you know, got the financial information on that. Uh, the unfortunate thing about absorbing it into your parks and recreations is, there is no definitive place where this is spent. Once it's absorbed, we don't, they don't have to have a natural key, just use at will. Now, this fourteen thousand dollars is specifically from players that sign up at Carter Park. Now, I know that Dotson Park has that, but I'm speaking on Carter Park here. So, this eight thousand dollars, once it's absorbed, can be spent anywhere. This money is specifically for, to be used for the help and the, you know, the upkeep and the maintenance of these Carter Park baseball fields and softball fields. But it, it hasn't really been used. It's not being used because we can't show those things. We wanna be seen where this money goes to. It needs to be seen. It doesn't need to be absorbed and just, well, it's spent where needed. Where needed is very discretionary when you're talking about parks and recreations. I mean, so, but I do wanna highlight some good things, and some things that I've, that, that we've been able to achieve so far. And, uh, so Dixie got about three thousand dollars of that money. That's the organization that runs the baseball program out there. So, this year alone, we spent almost four thousand dollars in new equipment for the boys. That's new catching equipment, new baseballs, bases for teams to practice. And that, that's good, 'cause we want kids to have very quality equipment, not just old, uh, raggedy equipment. We want kids to have the best protection and the best equipment. We got about six thousand dollars we spent in new pitching machines, because we're moving some of the younger ages to pitching machines. And we got six thousand dollars invested in these things. Um, and that, that's a lot of money. We spent a thousand dollars the other day, had a community cleanup day, and, uh, was kinda unfortunate, and not a lot of people showed up for that. Um, we had seven people show up total, and it was advertised for months. Uh, I spent a lot of time with it. Five of the people were from my team, and two independent coaches on the other team. And, uh, we had a gal that does lawn service that spent eight hours cleaning, edging, pressure washing the bleachers, uh, the concrete. We pressure washed the concession areas. We actually sanitized the inside of the concession areas where people, when they get food, it's, it's good clean food, you can assure that. And you don't have to worry about getting sick. My wife spent eight hours with two other, uh, three other ladies, literally cleaning from top to bottom. Floors, everything, just concession areas, the press boxes. We pressure washed for eight hours and spent almost eight gallons of gas. Two people non-stop pressure washing the concrete, edging. These are things that we shouldn't be doing. This is things that the city is contractually obligated to do by the collection of your tax money for parks and recreations, but they're not. But, so, instead of really bragging about it, we got out there and had a city day, but nobody showed up. Nobody, nobody came, but we were there. We still kept going, we still kept working for it. Um, and we've worked hard to make sure with the sheriff's department, for the protection of the people, 'cause that was one of the concerns uh, before that we talked about. Uh, the sheriff's department's gonna have a patrol car on-site for all the games. He has a copy of our schedule, and he's gonna put some security out there to make sure the ladies and the single moms and the kids feel secure late evening as it gets darker in that area. Because we're trying to get, you know, we wanna make sure that, you know, this place is, this is where it used to happen, it's gonna happen again. As we had almost two hundred people sign up, which is excellent, considering about seventy to eighty from last year's people bailed out and went to Sterling. And that's an alarming thing. I mean, we worked very hard, and I, and I pushed hard for people to sign up. And we've worked so hard for it. And sometimes you take a little flack when you push on people hard to sign up, because I wanted them to sign up. Don't bail out and give up on the community. So many people want to. They wanna just give up and go. Because, you know, the fields and everything are in horrible shape. Um, uh, another thing that we're gonna be doing this year, because, uh, as every city council member I've been, meeting I've been to, we like to honor people, um, people that have done good things. And so, this year, at the end of the year, um, and I, and because this, it kinda bears in this conversation, about eighty to eighty-five percent of the league is, is young black kids. Um, so, at the end of this year, we're having a Lou Brock tournament, if you don't know who Lou Brock is. Um, he's a Hall of Fame player from, um, Morton College, then went to Delta. Uh, you know, high school out there, he's really a dirt poor, but he made it big. And he's played for, he, you know, went to the Hall of Fame, he played for the Saint Louis Cardinals. Owned the stolen base record for years, still second in that, you know, that department, but he made it. And so, we're gonna try to use that to inspire these young kids. And the really young ones, all the way up to, hey, you can make it. We're spending, we're gonna spend a lot of time, a lot of money with that, and try hard to get, uh, with the help of Jesse Wall, to get some of his family to come in and try to honor that. And we're gonna create a huge trophy, and we're gonna literally have T-ball tournaments, Wii-ball tournaments. Every year tournaments, we got Dale High coming in to play. We're gonna try to grow them every year. That's gonna be great for the city. I mean, it's gonna be excellent to get people to come back into this town and have some tournaments again. Um, you know, we need that. We need some, you know, bring some revenue back into it, because it used to be very, it used to be a place where you feared when you walked in here. I didn't play for Bastrop, but I knew when I walked in, you had to fear it. So, also, if you drove by the park in the last day or so, we've got brand-new championship banners. Now, we're not through installing those all of yet, but if you look at the front gate, we have took down all the old faded signs. And we put up beautiful new championship trophy, uh, banners, huge, um, to highlight all the past champions. 'Cause we wanna bring that pride back. So, when you walk through the gate, you'll be walking through the championship road. That's all that. Along the field now, we have over sixty sponsors, um, that have donated extensively to this program as we try to revive it and put a lot of money back into it, because we weren't left with a lot, but we're gonna make, do with what we have. Um, that's a big deal. The community's behind us. The businesses are behind us. But we need the people to get in here behind us, y'all. We've gotta get, keep just, the city, the businesses, they wanna help. But we need the people to get out here. We need to come out and come together on this. But mostly, we need the city. Because of all the things we've highlighted here, I'm gonna break forth a list of everything the city has done so far for this. That's it. No, no dollars, no help, no, none, zero dollars. I've offered to paint the concession areas. I was told I could paint the concession areas, and I was told I couldn't paint the concession areas. Then I said, well, you can paint, but we don't know the colors of, of the, the grant money stuff. And I said, if you give me the color code, I'll paint it. We'll pay for that, to try to help out and provide stuff for it. Nobody could give me the color codes, until we pushed and pushed and pushed, and then all of a sudden, after we did our workday, the color codes got, oh, we know the color now, we've had a meeting on it. It's always conveniently right afterwards, and, and it's, it's becoming. It's always conveniently right afterwards and and it's it's becoming a habit, uh, it's just, I was given approval to help work on the fields. Uh, we we've received, uh, information from the insurance company that allows us to work on the fields. We we went out there and worked hard on the fields because they had literally been destroyed by disking up fields. If you know anything about baseball fields, you don't put tractor implements on this on fields, you just don't. We went out there and worked, I spent hours. Then I was told I could not step foot on the field. Jesse Duvall and Mr. Terry Peoples told me, don't touch the fields, don't get on the fields, don't do anything with the fields until opening day. Now, this is, this is horrible, folks. These are city, these are city parks.
Mr. Carpenter, this is, this is not a time to speak in the air to compliment the employees.
I was just speaking.
Okay, okay.
I was just speaking on that.
How long is Mr. Carpenter?
I have a question.
What does Mr. Green? How long is?
I didn't say, I didn't, I'm watching.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Green.
So Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir.
First of all, for me, for doing what you're doing for the fields, I actually drove out there and I see them signing, excellent job. What potential do you see in our fields? You play ball.
I s- I do see a lot of potential, but I don't mind and we want to work together to get those fields back. But I do feel at this point in time, in order to compete with people like Sterlington, uh, these fields, they got huge when going up the western road. East Washington has giant fields. In terms of attracting that, we're losing, I don't say losing talent because we got all the talent in the world right now. But we're losing the numbers and the numbers is what drives it up. The people coming into this ballpark and creating that, you want it, you want it packed out there. And even the people who are playing, I've got the messages, I wish I'd have went elsewhere now. Because the city's not doing anything. I wish I could have went elsewhere, I wish I'd have signed up in Sterlington, we want to get these fields back, but I can't do it alone. And I I want to help. And so at the end, I want to ask for to when maybe one of y'all to bring a motion up, but I want to do it at the end. Because I had a few more things until my time is up, I want to, I want to go all the way to you.
I think you have already exceeded your time, Mr. Carpenter. And, uh, let me clarify something in terms of, we have a reconstruction meeting about the grant. The painting. A lot of work is being done strategically planned and done. So to say that that it was convenient to, oh, we don't know the paint, because we didn't know. We had to have a meeting, we had to pick from many samples, trying to automate everything. To make everything really look nice, so the city is doing its work. Did you have any other comments?
Absolutely. Uh, if you say something's being done in a timely manner, the bleachers have been, uh, in disrepair for almost two years. I brought this to the attention, I was going to pay for somebody to do it. I had a welding company lined up with proper insurance, but when they found out that it was going to be work for the city, they pulled out. Because of bad dealings with the city. Now, I tried, I talked to Mr. Mr. Duvall, he said, we don't have a welding machine. We don't have the proper welder.
Mr. Carpenter, continue to bring up the employee's name, let me say this. I talked to our insurance carrier. Our insurance carrier instructed us what to do. Because the city is, there there are liabilities that fall on the city. Please bring the presentation to a close so we, because we have to expand our agenda.
I do want to say one thing, brother.
Yes, sir.
Due to the eleven and twelve year old league, uh, DC, they were short without a coach, my son attends. Um, me and James and another coach decided to coach. So it is a lot of parents that want their kids here, but they do have a lot of complaints. There's a lot of complaints, like even, um, we got teams like Dale High coming to Basta, which is good, we need to track them in our city, but we don't want them. Being that I play ball and I umpire, when you go to someone like, like Sterlington, it's nice. It make, it make teams want to come back, it make teams want to be a part of. We have so much to offer here and, um, that we can, I don't have the. The right ideal solution, but if we can get our parks up to par, if it's something like slightly compete with other parks, uh. We have a lot of traffic inside our city. And if not, if not, we can continue to lose our kids, that's the only thing that's going on. You know, we, you you think about all the money that Sterlington, East Washington and all these other different areas cities making up our kids. And and if that's not alarming to anyone, then I don't.
Okay, and and I.
Because I was ex, I'm sorry, I was ex, when I still want to go to Sterlington to play ball, but I decided to keep the position.
Mayor, one other question, is it possible to, um, them to sign a waiver in order for them to do the work without us being responsible?
Well, here's the situation, from this table, the sign of the waiver. Is that you really can't advocate or distance yourself from something that you allow. And I, I talked with our insurance carrier about that and that's why the yellow tape is put up. That's why the, uh, signage, because. Because we we want to protect the city's interest. We're not trying to destroy the growth and progress for young people. I mean, we have worked one on in in all of the parks that we could get, the city worked hard, we assessed every park. And and mildly, and I say this not just as mayor. To get that back, it bash of the city is not a way to do, to stand in a public meeting and discredit every, you know, it's not the way to do it. We want to embrace what you want. We want to embrace your granddaddy playing ball, we want, we want that. But we have to do things a certain way. And. Can I speak? Can I speak on something?
Because your goal, Mr. Green, is for the, the deals to be backed like they once was or somewhat close. Mayor, your your goal is to make Basta greater than you. My goal is for the building of all the kids around us, so if we all have the same thing in common, then why not work together something with it? So another question, eh, have the city addressed any of his concerns in the thing he brought up as we done anything to try to? Have we, have you been working on, as we've been working on the problems that he he has addressed?
The city has, the city has, for one thing, right now, the LCBDG grant signage is up, the work has begun. They selected the site where they're going to start it, over in Dotson, we've invested in Dotson. We've painted and painted the inside, the outside, the municipal center, we call it Chandelier. The crew, they're stretched to capacity. And now we have the grant and 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 certain things are going to have to be territory at all while they're doing that. So the city is making an effort. And yes, to answer your question, Mr. Green.
Yeah, because, you know, the the upgrades at Dotson Park, I tell you, the kids coming out there every day because they they enjoying the new court and everything. It will be like the same things, we get all our ball fields back up, then more kids and more parents will want to put their kids here instead of taking the festival. So I, you know, again, I think we all should at some point come together.
Does the city allow, does the city allow for volunteers?
Yes, like certain things, cleanup. That, you know, it has been doing that for years and helping to maintain, but there are certain things that you just do not distance yourself from. It's like with the bleachers, you know, to to expect a citizen volunteering to, uh, to go and work on the bleachers. And fix the bleachers, are you willing to, uh, to absorb the liability? Let's say you have a hundred people sit on those bleachers and they collapse. You know, so having authorized the fact that the city has been working on that this week. Having authorized cars put on those bleachers, making sure that they are right. You know, because that's, that's on the city and that's on the city's liability. Yes, unless you.
We had, we had an insured welder, that's going to come. But I, my question comes to this, we're not allowed, the teams are strictly barred from practicing on these fields. What is different from a a a group of people having a a get together on Sunday in the park and kids running around the field? And then kids practicing on a Saturday or Tuesday or Wednesday night? And then we're not talking about using lights and using city funds, we're strictly prohibited, we're actually required to find practice sites off-site. That's a city park. Now, if they can have a a get together on a Sunday and have, you know, have a good time and kids run around, why can't we practice? No difference than playing on a Tuesday night. And then I also want to add one other thing. If we're allowed to help, we were allowed to help and then I was told I couldn't, I won't mention that. I want one of y'all to file a motion, that way it can be official that we can help maintain these fields. If we're so shorthanded and so short-staffed and we can't do the work, you'd be surprised at the people that will step up and come do these fields. I have a mowing service that said if we need the field mowed, he'll mow it. He's actually a coach who volunteers with no kids, no kids. He sponsors the league, he helped eight hours clean the park up, edging grass. And we want to help, we want to help, we can't, I can't, I'm not allowed to step on the property. But we are allowed to have a part, a a a get together on a Sunday and kids run around, there is no difference. If we want to, I understand, let's not play during the week, I mean, during the season, tear the fields up. But we want to, we want to help.
Please, please bring your presentation to a close.
I'm asking for somebody to file a motion that allows us, as citizens, to help maintain these fields.
That's not on the agenda, Mr., uh, sir, that's, that's not on the agenda. Please bring your presentation to a close.
We need legal, I need legal counsel right now.
The reason why, the reason why we, if we want to make the motion, we want to make sure it's legal. So, uh, so I don't really know who to.
Uh, it it is inappropriate, I. Mr. Carpenter.
Counselor.
Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter, your time is up. At this time, I will move on to. Ask for a motion to expand our agenda to consider Resolution twenty-three dash twenty thirty-eight. A resolution authorizing the city of Basta to participate in additional national settlements. As expressed in the recent National Pharmacy Defenders Settlement Agreement. CVS, Walgreen and Walmart defendants in conjunction with suing to previously agreed Louisiana memorandum of understanding. As Louisiana Attorney General's Office. I'll entertain a motion to expand the agenda on the resolution as read to you. Is there a motion? Okay. Resolution, uh, dies with a lack of a motion. Tomorrow is the deadline date to participate in this. At this time, I will entertain. Sir? Do you, does you need time to read through? Can I be heard in my voice?
I'm going to look at this and say, performances in the settlement agreement. And again, expanding the general to make a decision, basically, we have a legal life, it's kind of like. It's kind of like this, you know, one of the, do you mind us asking Mr. Carpenter?
Mr., uh, here, Mr. Jonesy.
I make, I make a motion to adjourn.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make the motion.